Good evening. I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, July 12th, 2021, to order. The roll call, I'm here, Mr. Duncan.
Here.
Mr. Hema, not present. Mr. Lindell?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mr. Matson? Move on. Approval of the agenda. Any questions or additions? Hearing none. A motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move along. Public input. Citizens may speak to the issues not on the agenda. Please approach the microphone and before speaking, give your name for the record. Please limit your comments as close as possible to the three minutes, if you would, please.
Babe O'Gorman, Cannon Falls. As many of you are aware, Mr. Knowlton, Rick Knowlton, applied for a variance that you granted him, but in your packet last month was a resolution to deny it. And I don't know if that seemed odd to any of you, but it did to me. And I believe this month, you have a resolution on 1206th Street, and it's to allow the variance, which seems odd to me. Seems like the decision's made before the board meets, or this commission. As soon as Mr. Knowlton applied for a variance, Neil Jensen put on the public works agenda an item that would call for the closure of Sandstone Road. As we all know, the attorney and Mr. Jensen claim that the road is closed, so why would they ask to have a motion to close the road if the road was closed? It doesn't make sense again. Neither the city attorney nor Mr. Jensen have ever been to Sandstone Road. Neil Jensen admitted that at a public meeting last week. If the administrator and the lawyer are such authorities on law, wouldn't you think that they knew how to follow the city charter? The mayor runs the meetings and city council meetings, okay? He is in charge of the meetings. Yet we watched some attorney that I've never seen in my life before, who doesn't seem to understand that the mayor runs the meetings, and somewhere out of the thin blue air, they came up with a two-minute time limit. Now, it's kind of, I don't know where she is tonight, but I'm sure she's keeping time somewhere else more important, but to spend a couple hundred dollars for a professional timekeeper doesn't make sense, especially if I don't see where it's allowed anywhere in our city charter. The administrator doesn't live here, nor does the attorney. Neither one of them know anything about what is and what is going on in Cannon Falls. The lawyer has no idea how long that road has been open, nor does the administrator. I've been driving on it periodically for 18 years. There's been school buses on it. There has been traffic on that road, including police, city trucks. They've even been adding blacktop to it. The city engineer claims that Bluff Drive has a rating of a nine, and that's a one-out-of-one-to-10 scale. It rates a nine. It still doesn't even have the last lift on it, so I don't know what he's talking about, but it was installed at the same time that the T on Sandstone Road was installed. Same day, same contractor. The curb was put in, the street was put in, all simultaneously. The administrator has admitted that he doesn't want to take care of that street, Sandstone Road, so therefore, he doesn't want anything built there. Well, if that's the case, then why don't they finish Bluff Drive, which they haven't, and then why don't you go across Highway 25 and look at Limestone Road, which the same engineer rated at a one? There's been contracts twice to fix it in the last two years, and it's still not fixed. It's lined with houses, and it's wide open. Now, how can that road be open when it's a one and you're closing one that's attached to an eight and done at the same time? It makes no sense. Our new administrator, who's been here for just a little over a year, is less than truthful, and that is disturbing. He continually changes his tune. He is inconsistent. If you look in your pack tonight, you're going to find that we're approving this variance, and we were just told by this city attorney? They're very, very rare. Why do we have so many all of a sudden, and there's more to come? It's too bad that we don't have a council that can think for themselves and see through his crap. Thank you for your time.
Okay, Mr. O'Gorman. Any other citizens that would like to speak to an issue? Come on up, state your name. Try and keep it as close as possible to three minutes.
You betcha. Chris Albrecht, 6670 Bluff Drive, Cannon Falls. I have to say, last week, I was a little disturbed at the council meeting with not only the limited time, but the interruptions as reminding you of how much time you had left, which certainly threw your train of thought. Regarding Rick's request for a variance on his property, first of all, I'll cover the road really quickly. I've lived up on Bluff Drive longer than anyone. I've lived there now 12 years, and so I have seen the road in use the entire time, and periodically, even during the winter, they did plow it. In fact, the only time the barricades came in were at my request, because we had some people going into the far back and shenanigans and what have you. So regarding the road, I'm with Babe on that, in that it is, it was laid the exact same time. It really needs a top coat. The perception that somehow the utilities have sank or are unusable, that's impossible, because I am on those utilities. Now, there's several other houses as well. There was an argument last week regarding the house being turned facing now the other road versus Bluff, and there was some that, well, that would be unusual or what have you. Well, as part of my job, I've had a lot of developments. I lived in the Twin Cities for some time. I'm in the suburbs all the time, and after the meeting, I drove around Cannon Falls and did a count on how many houses turn on a corner and don't face the same as the rest of their houses. There are a lot. That's a common practice in every development in the nation, so this is not something that's unusual or what have you. And then lastly, the whole purpose of setback and what have you is the fact that you're basically having a hostile encroachment on someone else's quiet enjoyment of their property. That's the law. And in regards to this, the irony here is, the lot that this would be encroaching on is owned by Rick Knowlton. So we're not talking about a third mysterious party here that's somehow being adversely affected by this. It's Rick himself. And Rick, in that lot, has made accommodations so that the next house built there will actually function just fine. And he and I have gone over it several times and talked about it. I've been up to like, I watch all of this develop. They're digging a hole next to me right now across the street. And, you know, we're still paying for an 8,000-population water and sewer system with 4,000 people, and we want to encourage development in this town. Since I've lived here, that's been part of the conversation here, is we need more houses. We need more people. And here, you've got a development that sat fallow for many years until Rick and I started buying the lots and really making a stab at it. And so, you know, you got to look at, you know, yes, absolutely, I'm a big, I love living here. I love Cannon Falls, but you have to weigh also what's good for the city, but it's also good for the people in the city who are trying to do something to improve the city. And yeah, Rick's going to make a few bucks. I'm going to make a few bucks. But on the other side of it, I don't know, I was disappointed last week, highly. I got home and I was upset. My wife and I talked about it for some time. I really hope that maybe things can be changed around, because it's, again, these are good people trying to do good things. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Knowlton?
You know me, but my name is Rick Knowlton. In case somebody here doesn't know me, I think I know you all. I didn't know these two individuals were going to explain my situation better than I can explain it myself. I do very well one-on-one. I don't do very well with a large group of people. I'll try to be correct, and I'll try to be as honest as I can about this situation. My thing is, they've explained the situation, these two gentlemen. My thing is, I came for a variance, and as soon as I applied for the variance, the wheels with the administrator started turning already at Public Works. And in Public Works, I didn't know that they had the authority to tell you, the Planning Commission, which way I should turn my house, but I guess they have. But talking with the individual, I'm not going to mention his name. He happens to be a very good friend of mine. He's since rescinded what he said about which way he should turn the house. So, and that's been sent to a letter, correct, Bill, to all you individuals on the city council?
Which letter are you referring to? From?
Jeremy Mau.
No, I have not received a letter from Jeremy.
Did you receive it, Mike?
No, I haven't received anything, Rick.
Oh, okay. Well, then I was misinformed. He made the motion to turn the house at Public Works, so I thought that was odd. So I invited Mr. Mau up to the lot, like everybody else on the Planning Commission, you, Glenn, John, Bill, even you were up there now with me, but you drove up there. I appreciate your time doing that. With Jeremy, when I wanted to meet him up there, he said, "I'll meet you up there," and he didn't know where it was. He maybe knew where it was, but he wasn't there, so he followed me back over. So he wrote a, he emailed, and I thought that you people with ability to make decisions would have got that, but I'm sure you'll get it. Alls it says is that he wasn't informed about the situation that was moving forward with the house I want to build, turning it towards Sandstone Road. So when I came for the variance, I had two minutes to talk. The lawyer had 15 minutes to tell, they hired the city attorney to address this one issue, and I was overwhelmed with what she said, so I was trying to address her concerns, and really didn't have enough time to get into my own, into the variance, about how the house is going to sit, who is it going to affect. Last house on the street into a area that, right now, is dedicated as a park, and it is a park. So I had to start there. Didn't really get time to go into the variance. So my question to you as a planning commission is, is there a pre-planning commission people that starts at Public Works, that sends up information to you, and you vote on it, or how does the process work? Because when I got to the council, they said it was closed, that road was closed, and I don't see any documentation where that particular piece of road was closed. And I sure welcome it, because I have documentation that says it's open. Last fall, they came in and put blacktop down. They plowed it. Garbage trucks, police cars are up there turning around. Where would you turn around if that little T wasn't open? It's not a large amount of road. It's a road that can be fixed. We shouldn't be throwing roads away. We should be fixing them, so we can develop more. Andrus Farms owns a property that goes out of that development and comes eventually back to my property. They want to eventually develop that. And I would think that would be something you, planning commission people, would be very interested in hearing, because if you want more lots, buildable lots, and that particular loop would leave that development and go into areas where the soil changes to rock, not that blue shale clay. Other than that, I guess these guys did a better job than me talking. Thank you.
Okay, Rick, thank you. As far as your question as to the public works, we never have any affiliation with the public works. Has anybody on the commission?
No.
Never. Okay, anybody else? Public input? Hearing none, we'll move along. We'll go into our first public hearing, and that is Resolution 2021-07, conditional use permit for R and R investments of Cannon Falls at 101 Fourth Street North. Anybody want to stand up and give us an explanation of what's going on, or any considerations to the project? If you'd state your name, and once again, stay as close to three as possible.
My name is Marcy French. I was affiliated, actually, I started up the Cannon Arts Board in 2013. The Cannon Arts Board, just to give you a little bit of history, the Cannon Arts Board has received funding from CMAC through various grants over this time period since 2013, probably around $15,000 for various projects here in Cannon Falls. The one that you're looking at included, part of that funding is from CMAC. So I tell you that just because they've got their eye on Cannon Falls and, you know, seen some good things happen with Cannon Arts Board and stuff that we're doing. So this is just one that we're putting before you. We found Jeff and Mary Reinhardt, who we were thankful to find, that were excited and enthusiastic about putting a mural up on their building, and we couldn't have asked for a more perfect spot. I hope you agree to add some energy, give some life to a corner that many people see, and possibly draw people into the community. Do you have questions?
I guess I maybe had one. Are you going to redo the side of the building, or is it going to go right on the siding that exists?
Yeah, it would be, the siding would be taken down.
Okay.
And then there would be a surface. I think Kelly and Jeff have been talking, the artist and the building owner.
Something with a little better presentation?
Right. Yep, yep.
If you're going to go through that much work, it'd be nice to have it on something substantial.
Yes. Yep. The mural itself is, the design is celebrating the culture of Cannon Falls as it pertains to its natural environment, its location in Minnesota, and all the beautiful things we have around it. I think you can see that from the rendering or the sketch that Kelly did. We have, I think we have one, if not more than one, of the students that will participate in this project, too, which is kind of another, you know, plus for Cannon Falls, as we get to incorporate not only a Cannon Falls grad, who is now an artist and coming back to do some work with us, but local students who are, you know, interested in the arts. They get to, you know, put their stamp on the community as well. So we like that.
Thank you. Yeah, we just, just this evening here, in our arrival, saw the preliminary drawing.
Okay.
And anybody here that's not familiar with what she's trying to describe is, it's along the old barber shop. It was originally known as Quam's. I don't know how many of you've been around that long, but it's a large Minnesota to the left side, and then it signifies our area with a line drawn over to a smaller representation of the city's location along the river, along with a couple of the main streets. And I'm not real clear on what the far side is. I see a silo in the barn in the background and...
Yeah, she kind of made note. Diane, did you present the copy, the Kelly, like the little information explaining the drawing?
Farm, animal, barns, tractors.
No, just the words that she used to explain the drawing?
Yeah, I mean, I do it up.
Oh, not those. I mean, the email that she sent describing her vision with the work, with the piece.
It's supposed to be a quilt or something. I don't know.
Oh, okay. So you're missing the, her, actually, that was probably kind of an important piece, her vision along with that. And maybe I should explain a little further. The project is, the youth mural arts project is something that she started up in upstate New York, where she lives, and she has come back to Cannon Falls, I think it was, I'm going to say 2019, to work with us in the library, in the teen section, where she worked with some youth, and they did a large mural there. So anyway, this would, this design is kind of a general vision of what we're going to put up, but the students that are participating will also, you know, bring input to it. So that side piece, I believe, is farm...
Farm, animals, barns, and I guess there's a tractor there.
Yeah. So that stuff, the stuff in the written stuff is a starting point.
Okay.
You know, she's hoping to not take it all away from the students who will be involved, but the vision is to celebrate the natural environment, you know, the culture of our natural environment, canoeing, biking, farming, you know, everything that you see around us, but the natural, where we're situated locally.
Any questions from Marcy, from the commission?
Is this, do you plan on doing that yet this summer?
Yeah, we're hoping with the stamp of approval to start mid-August.
Would it be possible to get a more descriptive mural presentation before the city council?
When's the city council meeting? I mean, what are you looking for?
A week from Tuesday, on the 20th.
I'm not sure what you're looking for.
Maybe something just a little bit more defined than what we're looking at, so it's easier for them to make their decision?
Well, the thing with the drawing is, is that the project is for the kids, too, for the students.
There's the text of her.
Oh, okay. Okay, so here's, this is the artist, just a couple paragraphs here. "The mural project is really taking shape, and the energy it's stirring up is soon to be contagious." Whoops. That's my writing.
Sounds good.
Okay. Let's see.
Did you find it?
Yeah. Okay. "The rough draft of our Cannon Falls mural project. The idea of creating a map came to mind after seeing input from community members, as well as our dialogue and what this mural could become in order to best reflect Cannon Falls. At left, you will see a large outline of the state of Minnesota, pinpointing Cannon Falls' location as the destination. This is followed by an overview map of the major highways, will be labeled accordingly, running through town, as well as showing the outline of the river. Moving right, we see a map of the downtown streets. We'll adjust to the windows that are there, so we see the full Fourth Street, and at far right, from a farm landscape. The landscape will expand to include animals and crops local to the area. The fine details will be filled in by the students as we move forward. Students will be given specific areas to study and then include into the mural in the appropriate locations within the framework of the mural. See the list on the bottom to show what we plan to include." "The state of Minnesota will be filled in with various flora and fauna, as well as other noteworthy information, Twin Cities, Rochester, Mississippi River, et cetera. I hope this helps to bring a greater vision of what this mural will become. I hesitate So that's what she has written up along with the, you know, her, what you have there in front of you.
Any questions from the commission?
No, sounds good to me.
Yes. Is there anybody else here this evening that would like to speak in accordance with the murals presentation? Got somebody in the back. If you're done, Marcy?
Thank you, yeah. Thanks. Thank you, John.
Yeah, I'm on, this is Dave Mahachek. I'm on Zoom. I don't know if you can hear me at all.
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I'm on the Cannon Arts Board as well. And yeah, it's just a great project and with a great artist who's very established and has had a long career of doing wonderful things and she's coming back. She certainly did a nice project, as Marcy mentioned, at the public library. So, you know, I have no reservations in anything that she does topic-wise or whatever. I think it's going to be really a wonderful, I'm really excited to see what it turns out to be.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Is that pretty much it?
I got, I got one question for him.
Go ahead, Steve.
Do you know what happened to the cow that we approved for downtown across from Cannon Bells? We approved that, when was that built, do you remember?
Yeah, no, we, we were doing that in conjunction with Livwell Goodhue County, and that is now actually completed. It's morphed a little bit because it's no longer going in front of the cheese shop, Cannon Bells. So it morphed a little bit. It's now a life-size bison. But it's worked out really good and it's, it can park six bicycles, one fat tire bicycle and such. So you'll be seeing that in front of Art Org there right next to the VFW. So if you're going in the VFW, it'll be right next to, right on our grass, right next to there. And we're going to be putting it there in the next couple of days. It's all completed now.
Councilman Gesmi, does that answer your question? You're good? Okay. Any other input to the mural? Resolution 2021-07. Anything else from the commission?
No.
Motion to close that part, particular part of the public hearing?
I'll make a motion, we close it.
Motion's been made by Glenn, seconded by...
I'll second.
Bill, to close it. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Hearing none passes. Let's move along to the second public hearing. Resolution 2021-08, Habitat for Humanity at St. Clair Street, 1200 Sixth Street North. State your name if you would please and as close as possible to three minutes.
You bet. John Parks from Goodhue County Habitat for Humanity. And what we're looking for is a simple lot split here. We have a lot that's currently 142 by 105, and we'd like to divide that to 71 by 105. So our variance allows us to build a small house on that lot. And we have a Habitat homeowner that has offered to sell us that lot. And that pretty much sums it up.
One real quick question here. I've got, I've got two layouts for what are your presentation as far as the house as it sits on that lot? One shows the east side, or excuse me, the west side facing the alley at 15 feet, and the other one seems to show 10.
I think we have to set it at 10. I think that's what's required there.
Okay, so that would move the dimension on the east side to 15 and the west side at 10?
That's correct.
What, which particular direction is the garage going to enter?
Which direction? It'll, will come in from the alley.
Okay.
The plot should show a door on that side. If it doesn't, then I've got an updated drawing.
Yeah, we just have, unless somebody's got something different.
Like a site plan?
No. Where we can see the alley on there.
I see the alley, but I just see the dimensions of the home as well as the garage with really, truly no openings.
Right. The plan, the plan now has been developed further and we're coming in from the alley side. It makes more sense than cutting another driveway into St. Clair.
Okay, but you only have 10 feet.
10 feet, right, and that's what's required.
There's a minimum requirement there.
Right.
Park a car. You can't park a car, it's going to be in the alley, correct?
No, you'd have to park in the garage.
But I think we all know that's not going to happen. It's going to sit right there.
I don't know that we...
It's going to park in the alley.
I don't know that we have, if we have 15 feet, we'll use it. I don't think we did though.
What is the, what is the minimum requirement there?
On that side...
For that, for it to park a vehicle? Isn't there a minimum requirement of like 16 feet or something?
Not according to... 15, is it not, Diane?
Not according to permitting.
For, if you're going to have a garage entering on there?
It's, what is the zoning requirement there? Do you remember, Diane?
A side setback on a garage side is smaller than normal setbacks. If the commission, if you want to turn to RB section, the very back page 324.
I thought we had room to meet the setback requirement and keep it...
Garage accessing alley 15 feet.
15 feet.
15 feet?
15 feet.
So we're at 15 and...
Can you make that happen?
22, I think we can make that work, 15. It just, it depends on how deep we drive, you know, draw the garage. And we can comply with whatever we need to there.
And John, that's what you did, I believe, with the survey from David Rapp is when you moved it to 15 after we talked together, okay?
15, 22, we're 15, if we go 22 on the garage and then the house is 24...
You shortened the garage up to 20 feet last time we talked, and then it went to 15 feet where it accesses the alley.
Let's see, 46...
After we got the survey from David Rapp.
46 and 15. 46, 15 is...
Square footage of the home is 900?
It's just about, just a little under 900.
If you, if the commission wants to look at the Rapp's land surveying, an interior side setback is 10 feet that he does meet, and he did make it the 15 feet. He did shrink up his garage two feet to make the 20-foot.
20 feet is what we drew the garage at?
Yep.
On that last plan?
Yep, yep. That was the final...
I've drawn so many plans I can't keep track of.
That was the final plan, yes.
The presentation that we should be looking at as the commission would be the one that's labeled Rapp.
Rapp's Land Surveying, yeah.
Yep, this is the one that's correct.
Any questions from the commission?
No, the 15 and the 10 meet the requirements then.
They do, yeah.
I do have a question. The homeowner, and I don't know this, I'm assuming she has a mortgage, are they going to release that part of the lot?
They'll have to.
Well, no, they don't have to.
Well, to sell it, to do any... If they're going to sell it to us.
Well, that's my concern. Can you, you know, has that been checked into? Is whoever holds the note on that property going to release that part of the lot?
Goodhue County?
It's for you to figure out.
We own the note.
Well, you own the note?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right.
Yeah, so they will have to.
Yeah, I got, yes, I got it now. I was thinking, I don't think a bank owns that note.
We've already had that discussion. We're going to buy it and we're going to give them the money.
I do, I do have a concern, and I don't know if this is for you or whatever. As we look at the lot, what we're going to do to that other lot, the homeowner lot now becomes 71 foot deep.
Right.
105 wide.
Right.
So you're applying for variance here to reduce that lot size from 140 down to 105, correct?
That'd be correct.
Okay, but then the other lot, because of how the home sits in there, that lot becomes 71 feet deep by 105. So does that, if we approve this automatically, does that...
You're right, it would...
Conduct the variance here, automatic for this? So my concerns are that versus, you know, what would happen to this home in the future if it was to burn or something? Would it be in compliance?
Noncompliant.
Would it be in compliance with the whole, with the new home?
I see your point. We're actually...
But, so being 71 foot deep, is that going to be a problem? I don't personally have a problem with it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but just some things to think of.
Well, in this case, the homeowner's been very happy to think about the idea of not mowing that extra space anymore.
But, and I'm, I'm not seeing any notes from the city attorney or anything on that this would be a problem, but...
No, in fact, the end of it says administrative subdivision lot split. That's really what we're talking about, in addition to the variance on the depth of the lot.
And this home is 26 by 36, is that what I'm seeing?
24 by 36. That's, that was my latest drawing. I think that's what I gave you.
26, 36.
I got 26 by 36, but you're saying it 24...
Right, that's so we could get the garage deeper. Yes.
36, 24 by 36?
24, 36, correct.
Okay, so we got 864. How many bedroom home is this?
That'll be a two-bedroom home. But it has, we, we will build the house with a bathroom roughed in on the basement level. And, you know, it has the potential to, I mean, we've built the same house, believe it or not, with four bedrooms. So...
Yeah, I was just looking at the square footage required for a two-bedroom home.
Right. Where are we at? I don't even know that.
Okay, it's in here. I believe we're okay though.
I mean, we're going the wrong direction if that's the case.
No, 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 we just wanted to make sure. We asked the per question.
We're trying, yeah, yeah, I get it.
What's the square footage you have on that again, John?
864 for square footage.
864, now...
Two-bedroom home requires 800.
So you're in.
You're good. We just want to make sure.
A little wiggle room.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify because our, our drawing shows something different from what you're saying.
Right.
We saw 26, 36, and that's what we looked at.
Any other ques, excuse me, questions from the commission?
No, not here.
No, just, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Is there any more input from the floor with this situation? State your name and once again, keep it as close to three as possible.
Joseph Paulson. I would be the resident right across the alley on the west side. Not happy about finding out that there'll be a house maybe 10, 15 feet away from my home where the alley is. The issue with that, the alley is higher right now than my property, all right? Anytime we get a big rain, snowfall, I have runage going off and flooding my garage. I bought a sump pump to go ahead and take care of that problem. City comes in, adds class five, raises the alley. Issue keeps on happening. Chances are, putting a garage with an apron, it's all going to run right back down into my property, maybe into my house if they raise the grade at all building. When they built their first habitat on that property, there was no consideration that that alley is the only access into my garage from the street. And with the construction workers, delivery of materials, so on, they use it as a parking spot instead of an alley. And I've constantly had in the past ask the city if I can go ahead and use the other side of, which is supposed to be an alley, but they have a resident that vacates that part of the alley in the winter. And the city does not give me a complete answer if that's an alley or not. And the homeowner on the other end considers it his property, mows it, plants grass, vacates and puts a barrier up every winter. I need to know what's going on, and I just feel right now that this is going to be way too close to my property. Ever since I bought my house, there was never a building that close to my property in the past. I'm losing the view and what's potentially going to come up and flood my property in the future has to deal with the city looking into that. And seriously, having somebody come out and put more than just a patch on that alley, it has to be dropped probably a good foot. It's never been done in the 18 years I've been there. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Anyone else?
Misty Deering. I'm the homeowner of 1200 Sixth Street. I just want to say as a Habitat owner, it's been a very big privilege to have a Habitat home, and I really feel honored to be able to give that privilege to another mom. And, you know, we've taken really good care of the property and the alley has been a source of contention for the whole neighborhood that surrounds the alley ever since I moved in. And, you know, I guess I would just say, like to say in public on record, it doesn't belong to any of us. It's city property. And to be claiming it as our own, I think, is ridiculous. And so I think we need to think about others and think about what this, building this home can do for another family, for Cannon Falls itself, and move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Mr. O'Gorman?
So this is a public hearing for variance, correct? And it's new construction?
To split, to split the lot.
Yeah, but there's a variance also, correct?
Yes.
Am I correct there? I want to make sure I'm correct.
You are correct.
Okay, so there is a variance and it is new construction. And I would like to know how this even got before you folks? Because that's what I was addressing earlier. And I believe in your packet that the recommendation is basically approved because there is a resolution stating that. Am I correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so the city attorney, her name's Sarah Schwartzoff, Schwartzoff, and she's of Hoffberry, appeared before the city council on July 7th last week, and this is what she said. "When granting a variance, a state statute sets forward the standards that have to be considered. A variance may only be granted if it is in harmony with the general purposes and must, must follow the intent of the zoning ordinance and be consistent with the comprehensive plan." And in addition, a variance can only be granted if the variance can demonstrate practical difficulties. Practical difficulties exist if there are three things. Number one, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner not permitted by the zoning ordinance. Number two, the plight of the landowner is due to circumstances unique to the property not created by the landowner. And they went over that and over that and over that at the council level. And number three, the variance, if granted, won't alter the essential character of, or charter of the location, I'm sorry. A lot of time was spent on number two, and if the plight of the landowner is caused by the unique conditions of the property, she was talking about all variances. Okay, so this is new construction, this is a variance, and, and she also stated that it is very rare for a variance to be required for new construction on a new lot. Now, I watched them build that Habitat for Humanity because it was your lot, John, it was Gubin's place, I don't know what the hell is going on. And, and there's nothing wrong with that. I have absolutely no problem with that. I have absolutely no problem with them doing the next one. But what I'm telling you is, is that the city attorney, and why isn't she here? And why, why isn't she explaining to you that this is very rare? And that's been my issue, and that's Mr. Knowlton's issue the entire time. For some reason, Mr. Knowlton was singled out. We've been doing these ordinance, or these variances for decades that I'm aware of, all over the place. But all of a sudden, Rick Knowlton comes along and there's a roadblock put up, and it was the administrator that did it. She also implied that if the city planning commission, city council don't act consistently in their decision, that it opens up the city to potential... up the city to potential lawsuits. Well, let's face it, anybody can sue anybody anytime for anything, anywhere, anytime, doesn't matter. Okay? So, boo hoo, who cares? Sue me, I don't care. I'll see you in court. What? Defend yourself. Be consistent. And I think that's the problem here. We are not being consistent, and it is not you folks. Believe me, it is our city council. It's too bad that they don't have minds of their own. Thank you for your time.
Mr. O'Gorman?
Yes?
Anything further in this particular public hearing? No further questions from the commission? Hearing none. Glenn?
Well, are they gonna, you know, would they have to do, the city have to do something with that alley, or claim that it is the city's alley, or?
I think that's something that we can put in our arrangement and pass it along to the city council.
I think so, to Paul's point, so we're not flooding his basement, that that alley shouldn't be cut down or could be cut down.
Can't create a hardship for existing dwellers.
Yeah, I rewrote that question, Alan.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Is there any other further questions?
I'm.
By the commission? Nobody's out there?
Okay.
Motion to pass this public hearing on?
Well, I'm gonna make a statement first, but.
Go ahead, John.
I do not agree with Mr. O'Gorman's statement that, I agree with what he's saying, but I don't agree with the city attorney of, this is rare. This is not rare, this happens all the time. So I don't agree with that. And I am gonna be consistent by making a motion that we do approve this. This variance and this lot split.
We'll have to do that after the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Christensen?
Yep, it's okay.
Uh, any further questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to close this particular public hearing?
I make a motion to close.
Motion's been made by Mr. Christensen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Duncan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passing on, third and final public hearing, conditional use permit for David Olson, um, twenty, twenty-one dash oh-nine. I know there's somebody out there this evening.
Hi there, gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity. My name's Kurt Nelson. I'm a veterinarian that's locally here. I've been here since two thousand nine, mostly in Zambrota, the Good Hugh area, Lake City, and I get up to the Hastings and through Cannon Falls quite a bit. So what I'm here for is, is I, um, so David Olson is the owner of the Artisan Plaza, and that's why his name's on there. But I am leasing, or planning on leasing that south end of that building to start up a state-of-the-art small animal clinic here in Cannon Falls. And we're getting bids put together for, for doing some, from build-out work. So it's nothing to the outside structure or anything like that. It's only gonna be putting walls up inside, basically exam rooms. There'll be three exam rooms in the, and I think you have the plans right here.
There's a print grid over here, yes.
Everyone see them or not? Um, it's changed a little bit, just minor stuff, nothing major, but it's just gonna be a state-of-the-art small animal. It's gonna have state-of-the-art x-ray equipment, ultrasound equipment. And it's something that I feel like with my business, now I own another veterinary clinic out of Good Hugh. It's out of my home. It's called Good Hugh Vet Clinic. And we have gotten the demand to expand into more small animal stuff. And right now, we're doing a lot of that stuff in my house, which I'd like to get my house back to my house. But, um, so we're, we're expanding that and trying to do this here in Cannon Falls. And with your guys' blessing, I would love to start doing that. And if you guys have any questions, please don't hesitate. Anything is, I'll answer anything.
Commission, have any questions for Dr. Nelson?
Yeah, describe small animal. Are we talking cats, dogs?
Cats, dogs, maybe not snakes, but I'm kidding.
But we're not talking farm animals.
We're not talking, that's what my other business is for, so they're gonna be two complete, separate entities. I have had some, and I've talked to Mike about this, but like right now, I've had a lot of demand for like equine stuff or horse stuff. I do all that on their farms now. So that's not gonna be involved with this. I'll still continue to do that. Um, and that, the cows and, and horses and pigs and all that kinda stuff is all gonna be not here. This is just gonna be a small, basically what it's gonna be is, it's gonna be a small animal hospital. You bring your dog or your cat or whatever, and they're in and they're back out. There's no grooming, there's no housing, there's no overnight unless there's like any complete emergency. I'll have facilities in there, but typically, it's gonna go home the same day.
Is this open twenty-four hours?
It will not be, no.
Okay, what are you thinking for business hours?
Probably, and I haven't completely, right now to beginning, 'cause we're starting this from ground zero. So there's nothing, we're not, we don't have any, you know, anything like that. So we're starting from ground zero. Right now, it's probably gonna be eight to five, but that may change to like seven-thirty to five-thirty. It may be, depending on demand and how busy we get right away, it, it may be, maybe at late night, like, say like seven o'clock or, you know, something like that. So people that get off work can come and, and, and utilize the, the facilities. And I still probably not gonna do Saturdays, but that's another possibility, like, like eight to noon on Saturdays. So all that's up in, for discussion with you guys if that's an issue or not, but that's kinda what I've been thinking. Typical small animal, you know, hospital hours.
Okay.
Well, there aren't any houses around there anyway, so it's.
No.
Wouldn't matter if you're open.
No, no. And David and I, David Olson and I have had the numerous discussions about the sound and stuff like that. So we're taking precautions with if that restaurant ever opens, which he says right now may not, I don't know, that's up to him. But we're taking sound barrier, you know, keeping, so, so we're gonna be doing surgeries, right? So dogs waking up can be whiny and can get loud. So we're taking, you know, soundboard. And I actually just met with Jeff's, one of Jeff's assistants in doing the, the material stuff. And that's one of the things that we talked about with, you know, trying to make sure that there's a barrier there, that we're basically soundproofing this whole thing. So that way, there's no carryover even within the building if the restaurant opens back up.
There'll be considerations for animals. Pets always wanna relieve themselves of something for that.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Uh, I just had one quick question. We spoke earlier about it today. Maybe could explain to the rest of the commission, uh, as far as euthanasia goes, how the disposal would transpire?
So typically with euthanasia, we use a solution to do that. We usually cremate them. It's a, it's a process that we send off. So what will happen is if you bring your pet in and we euthanize it for whatever reason, it'll get frozen until that guy from Hayfield can come up and pick it up, and then it's cremated, just like you and I are cremated if we decide to do that. And then they bring back the ashes. So it'll be, and he, he, we've already been in contact, he'll come up twice a week from Hayfield to pick up animals that are euthanized. So it will be, anything that is done will be immediately put into, unless they're taking it with them. But, yeah, to bury wherever, within city ordinances or out in their farm or wherever it is, just depends. But if they want them cremated, they will be frozen. So.
Any further questions from the commission?
No.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to add to this? Any comment whatsoever? Yes, please. State your name if you would, then stay as close to three as possible.
Uh, Don Lanning, and I'm a Cannon Falls resident here and a small animal owner. And I would love to have another vet available in this area. I don't know about any of you, but if you have any small animals in the area, it is very hard to get in for routine kind of procedures because vets right now are very strained in their time, just with the COVID procedures and stuff that they're using. So I would love to see another vet in this area. Right now, I take my dogs either to Oatana, Hastings, or Kenyon. So, um, it would be a very nice add to the community.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the crowd? Any additional questions from the commission?
No.
Motion to close this particular final public hearing?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Okay, that concludes the public hearing. Now we're open for discussion as the commission. Let's go with the first one, Resolution twenty-two-one oh-seven. One oh-one, Fourth Street North, conditional permit for R and R investments of Cannon Falls. This is the mural. Any further discussion by the commission on this item? Motion to accept or deny?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Motion's been made to accept by Mr. Duncan. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been seconded by Mr. Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, pass. Public hearing variant twenty, where am I at here? Twenty-two-one oh-eight, variance for the Habitat Humanity at St. Clair Street, twelve-hundred Sixth Street North. Conversation, questions by commission?
No questions. That is an awful big lot, you know, and I believe that it, uh, does support a small home going in there. I think it would look pretty good, um, knowing the neighborhood and everything, and I think it would fit right in there. Um, to Mr. Paulson's point, I thought we should do something with that alley, whether it's cut it down or something like that to keep that water from going into his property. I think that's gonna have to be addressed. Um, but I think it'll, it'll fit good in there. My only, um, uh, concern there would be what we're doing to the other lot. Uh, making it seventy-one deep and a hundred and five. Um, that would be my only concern, that the council will have to, uh, take into consideration to the other lot. But I think it'll fit nice in there.
Is there any further discussion as the commission?
So, would that be, do we have to put in something to have an engineer look at that or something to see how to lower that alley, or what they're gonna do?
Probably would be the public works commission.
Right, it would be our intent to, uh, rationale what needs to be done in a motion to submit to the city council. Um, it's gonna be rather a technical motion, I'm guessing, with, uh, the two technicalities that Mr. Christensen has spoke of. You're showing concern also.
Yeah.
Mr. Lundell of the elevation? Of the alley?
If we just say the engineer has to look at it and approve lowering the alley or something, I don't know.
But I think you're gonna. I don't know the exact wording of for that. We just wanna make sure we're not gonna flood Mr. Paulson's home or.
Right.
Garage, yeah.
Is there a form of a motion you can come up with?
Yeah.
With that explanation? You did pretty good the first time. Can you remember it?
Mr. Chairman, if I might?
Mr. O'Gorman?
You have a perfectly capable public works director that could handle that. I know he could. Thank you for your.
Without an engineer. Because they just charge big bucks.
Well, then we could just say, um, the public works will take care of the alley so there's not flooding Mr. Paulson's garage.
Right, so you, you would make a motion, either Mr. Christensen or Mr. Lundell of, uh, variance passing in the, with the conditions of re-elevating, um.
Lowering, lowering the elevation.
Lowering the elevations in the alley.
On the alley, yep.
Yes, I'll, I'll make that a motion, that we let public works.
Clearly we got that as a motion?
Um, okay.
If we go word it correctly.
The public works will lower the, the alley to.
Accommodate?
Accommodate Mr. Paulson's property, that it doesn't, um, have, that he doesn't have runoff into his garage and lot. I, I would guess, I don't know how you wanna put that.
Undo hardship from adjacent variance?
Yeah.
Have a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passed. Any further discussion, uh, from the board on any other items?
Oh, we still got the, uh, third item.
What was, we did, oh.
David Olson.
Oh, sorry, Dave. Um.
Kurt.
Public hearing for Resolution twenty-two-one oh-nine, Mr. Olson's Artisan Plaza for the vet, proposed veterinarian clinic from, uh, Dr. Kurt Nelson?
I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Mr. Duncan, seconded by Mr. Christensen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, that one passes also. Is there any other further discussion on anything that doesn't pertain to what we've listened to this evening by the commission?
Nothing here.
Further discussion? Look for a motion to adjourn?
All moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's closed.